Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven PM. So, welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Granville here in November ten, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gellerlos, Meringa.
Yep, here.
Norbert.
Here.
Steenstrom.
Here.
Truus.
Present.
Vanderwall. And Mayor Moss.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Josh Meringa, Councilmember Meringa, to chair the meeting this evening. Is that a plan? We have a motion and a second to appoint me as the chair for this meeting. Is there any discussion? Are you going to do a roll call vote right now? Let's see, do a roll call vote on that person.
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Norbert.
Yes.
Steenstrom.
Yes.
And Truus.
Yes.
Thank you. And moving to the next item here, since we do have several council members who are absent tonight, as well as Mayor Moss, the chair will entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Moss and councilmembers Vanderwall and Gellerlos. So, motion support, any discussion? All favor of excusing Mayor Moss, councilmen Vanderwall and Gellerlos say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries, excused. Uh, moving down to the invocation, I believe we have Pastor Todd Candy here from Grace Bible Church here in Granville to give the invocation. So, for those of you who wish, please join us in standing for the invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, to you we come with a grateful heart for the blessings, the bounties that we enjoy this season especially we remember. And we thank you for your infinite grace. Even as we hear the sirens going, we pray you would intervene for whatever is happening. We ask that these leaders of our city would pursue whatever is true and noble and right, pure, whatever is lovely, admirable, excellent, praiseworthy. May their hearts be filled with thoughts of such things. Now, as the meeting tonight proceeds, may you, Lord, enable these here to fulfill the agenda set before them. Amen.
Please join in saying the pledges.
Pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You've got a couple of meetings actually happening tonight, but the first one, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight. Is there any support? Motion and support, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same? Motion carries, and we have approval of the agenda. Next, we have the minutes of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting. And we'll turn to the city manager here for any highlights that he'd like to share.
Don't think I have anything to highlight particularly about the minutes, but like normal, I think Marcia did a pretty good job trying to uh, highlight the premise of last meeting. Um, but if there are any questions or any concerns related to that, please let us know.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-seventh meeting. So, support, motion and support. Any discussion, any corrections, comments? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Moving down to the presentation of bills. That's what I meant to ask the city manager for.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as you all can see, um, we have a relatively smaller amount compared to our normal uh, when it comes to the checks being presented for approval this evening, the total amount, the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Um, I have just a few that I'd like to highlight for you all this evening. Uh, the first one being by a vendor named ACP Entertainment in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. This is for the ice rink, train, and additional entertainment activities um, that will be taking place at the upcoming Christmas at the Commons event on December sixth. Uh, we have an invoice from Black and Gold Transport in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, this was the paving, uh, on Ottawa, uh, where the new storm sewer was installed earlier in the year. Uh, that was approved back on October thirteenth. We have EJ USA Inc. in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents. This was a number of replacement fire hydrants. Camps Inc., twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, this was the periodic yard waste grinding that the DPW uh, brings in to grind up all the sticks and leaves and other yard waste that are brought to uh, the pile that we provide at DPW. Uh, OCBA Landscape Architecture, uh, invoicing the amount of five thousand six hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, this is the landscape architect that has been helping us move the Mill Race Park project forward. Um, that is an, that is an ongoing progress payment associated with project management services. Strain Electric LLC in the amount of fourteen thousand. Uh, they had to install some new traffic light sensor replacements. So, it's the little discs that get installed in the roads uh, that are used to manage the timing of the traffic lights. And then lastly, uh, uh, Verderwell, ooh, I butchered that, I apologize. Uh, Verderweld Hafter LLC in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred. Um, this is our audit firm that many of you are familiar with. Um, those are the costs associated with the annual audit. Uh, that took place a few weeks ago, and as a friendly reminder, uh, they will be in attendance at the next meeting on November twenty-fourth to present the annual audit report to the city council. Um, so as normal, those are the few bills I'd like to highlight this evening, uh, but I'm happy to discuss any of the others in more detail if you're interested.
All right, chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, as presented.
Can I ask a question? Um, that's training electric bill. Was that part of the original bid, or was that in addition?
That was for not associated with either of the two light replacements that we just did. Um, that was just periodic maintenance of the discs that are installed. Charlie, do you know specifically where that work took place?
Um, on the Wilson, off Wilson by Uchello, is that intersection in that area.
Okay, thank you. So, no, it was not part of one of the, um, the bigger replacements we're doing on Forty-Fourth and Kenowa or over here on Nelson Prairie, we're just ongoing maintenance.
Okay, and I, I move to approve. Your second? Support. Support. All right, we have a motion of support. Any other questions, comments about the bills? RC, what do you call the golden?
Councilmember Norbert.
Yes.
Steenstrom.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
And Chair Meringa.
Yes. Thank you. So, moving on to presentations, we have a large group in the audience today of students and parents. And I believe we have a teacher as well, Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you.
So, we've got the Oakstown Win Group to come make a presentation, so welcome.
Um, so our idea is to do an advocacy day to protect and teach about Buck Creek and its animals.
Um, we want to have an advocacy day where people of all ages can come and help the creek thrive. What we are doing, we believe is important because not a lot of people are aware of the things that humans are doing that, doing to impact our local watershed. You'll be able to go on the creek, catch a microvertebra or two, and much more. We have many different stations such as...
Um, station one, how to protect Buck Creek and its animals. Station two, how to alert someone if the water level is low or something's wrong with Buck Creek. Station three, buying native Michigan plants to protect endangered species. Station four, waiting in Buck Creek. And station five, looking at macro invertebrate. And finally, at station six, a nature walk.
Station one, how to protect the Buck Creek animals. We may or may not have a demonstration animal or a human in a costume, but this station will teach people what to do if they find a hurt animal in the wild and do not interact with wildlife.
Um, I'm Lola. Yeah. Station two, how to alert someone if the water level is low or something is wrong. In this station, you will learn how to contact someone if you think something is wrong, but not by calling 911, by alerting a Buck Creek organization by email.
Um, we will be selling native Michigan seeds for a dollar fifty, and they will be in packs of ten. There will be many different types of flowers, too.
So, um, we'll have blanket flowers.
Um, more blanket.
Blanket flowers.
Uh, sunflowers.
Milkweed seed. Prairie smoke seeds. Monkey flower seeds.
Um, gerani, gerarium. Seeds. Station four, waiting in the creek. This station, you will get to go in the creek, and there are these special overalls called waiters. And the waiters are waterproof, so you don't have to worry about getting wet. Also, you might have to wait a little bit because it's first come, first served, because we don't have one for every single person.
Station five, looking at macro invertebrate. When you catch anything, you can come and look at the station five table. At the station, you get to study your macro invertebrate, find out what it is, and release it.
Station six, nature walk. At this station, you will get a guide with a group of other people to go look and study nature. Take a break, walk, and enjoy. See trees, different flowers, and some parts of the riverbed.
Why this will help Buck Creek. This advocacy day will bring awareness to Buck Creek and help Buck Creek shine. When we do this event, the, when we do this event, it will help people understand how good or bad Buck Creek is doing. All funds go to Buck Creek helpers like Friends of Buck Creek so our local watershed can shine.
Um, there will be extra info, so this day will be around July fifth, we think. And, um, Friends of Buck Creek has reached out to us and said that they will help and donate. Thank you, Friends of Buck Creek.
Why we picked July fifth? We picked July fifth because most people will be in town, and it will be right after Fourth of July, so we can clean up.
Um, this is our flyer. Come to Buck Creek for an advocacy day on July fifth. Help the creek. And then the address.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing that presentation with us. It's clear that you guys put a lot of time and worked into that, a lot of creativity, so thanks for sharing that with us. Does anybody have any questions for the students?
Yeah, so why did you pick Buck Creek for the focus of your, of your project here?
So, our unit, our giant, oh, our giant unit was Buck Creek, and everyone would get ideas, and there were four groups. And they all picked a way to help Buck Creek.
And did you have to present this to classmates as well?
Yes, we presented it in front of our pods, um, which are like a hundred students each. Um, and they voted, and they picked all the students that are here today as the best ones.
They made the right decision. Nice job, y'all.
Any other questions for the students? Anything you want to share with your answer?
I think that Lola covered it well. Uh, we did this unit with around one hundred kids at Oakstown, and it's an extension to an image program that we had for many, many years, uh, since the early eighties in the third through sixth grades. And with the new school of Oakstown being, uh, on a very tight schedule, you know, they feel that, I'm sure, we move class to class, rapid-fire succession. Uh, we do, our win time is just on the agenda in thirty-minute chunks rather than a half-day as we used to do for image. So, um, that gives us the opportunity to serve a lot more kids, and, uh, some of these students were part of that program in past years, and some are, um, new to the win time groups this year, but they've all done extraordinary learning. And, uh, we want to give thanks to some community partners we had, you know, Mr. Graham invited us to come and visit last week and, uh, check out the space. And, uh, we also have other community partners like Friends of Buck Creek that was mentioned. And, uh, we have Matt Bain here with us from the Lord Granviller Organization of Watersheds. And we also had, um, support from, um, the LEVIAC or West Michigan Wildlife and Action Council throughout the unit. So, those community partners helped educate and engage with kids, and they were a key part to this, so we owe them our thanks as well.
And you have four groups total coming today?
We do, we have a few more to go. Ready for next? Get that ready for them. All right. Talk about the ducks next, everybody's favorite residents of the creek.
All right, come on up, students. Introduce yourselves.
I'm Harper.
I'm Oliver.
I'm Ariella.
I'm Lola.
Oh, I'm proud of the ducks. Uh, our project and proposal, we heard from a Friends of Buck Creek member that the bread the community often feeds the ducks obsess their stomachs. So, we had the idea of making signs to inform the community of this. We also heard that if you're going to feed the ducks, it should be something like leafy greens or peas. We are planning on including this information on the signs, too. It's important to help the ducks because they're an important part to the Buck Creek ecosystem.
A big part of our idea is including information on what is healthy for the ducks to eat. Ducks could eat a variety of foods that include underwater vegetation like algae and pond weeds, snails, worms, and other small creatures, also leafy greens and peas. Please do not feed the ducks.
Um, when the community feeds the bread to the ducks, it harms the environment. This happens because bread isn't part of a duck's normal diet. So, when the duck's waste gets out into the water, or like the land around the water, in the water, and the rain pushes it into the creek, it like mucks up the water, and it's kind of like trying to re-smoke for the living creatures, like fish, that the waste makes its way into. This can lead to the death of fish and other creatures. This is one other reason that feeding ducks bread isn't good. So, what there is, there's Buck Creek. And those are the places we're planning on placing the signs. They're all on the right side of the river, because that's where the, like, the Buck Creek Trail is. So, that's where the most popular places to feed the ducks are.
Um, the signs we're planning to put are to inform the community about the issue. Most people don't know that feeding the ducks bread is bad, so the purpose of the signs is telling them about that. Because, because people don't go to Buck Creek because they want to hurt the ducks. They feed them because they think the ducks like it, and they do like the taste of bread, but it makes their stomach hurt. Another real-world example is it, like, if you're lactose intolerant, you're probably gonna like dairy products, if you like it or not. But you would get a stomach ache, just like the ducks. So, no fines would be placed if you do end up feeding the ducks, but you shouldn't, and that's what our project is about. If the community knows about it, they may also pitch in to help. All in all, please do not feed ducks.
And here is a sign example, and we're also gonna have a little QR code so that, like, people who don't, who want to, like, know more information about it can just scan it and know more information.
So, it's used, that one.
Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you, students, another really great idea. Anybody have any questions for this group? Good job, guys. All right, there's another presentation?
We do, two more. All right, gents, are you ready?
Come on up, students. Is everybody okay?
What?
I'll leave that here for you guys.
I, you said you won't.
Thank you.
Stay at the middle?
Okay, so, uh, I'm Jude.
I'm Eric.
I'm Peyton.
I'm Henry.
And our idea, um, is planting native plants to prevent erosion in Buck Creek. Why it's important, planting native plants in the nominal area is very important. It will help prevent erosion from happening, such as the ground below the fence. Then the fence would fall into Buck Creek and pollute it. Speaking of pollution, when human-made materials such as waste, concrete, et cetera, go into Buck Creek, it will pollute it. And as we know, over time, the water from Buck Creek will end up into Lake Michigan, where we get most of our drinking water. So, planting native plants will suck up a lot of that ore wood, stop it from getting into Buck Creek.
Here are some plants we're thinking of planting. Jopai weed. The jopai weed is a tall, pink or purple wildflower. This plant will help beautify the area and help against erosion, given that its roots are up to sixteen inches long. They also attract pollinators like bees and butterflies. This means that you will not have to plant more of these, and you will have to worry about buying more seeds every year.
The black-eyed susan is a North American native flower known for their bright yellow petals and dark center. They look kind of like a small sunflower. These flowers require no maintenance, meaning once we plant them, they will regrow and multiply in the spring. You won't have to deadhead them, and the seeds fall and grow more plants, so you won't have to keep replanting them. The roots can go up to two feet, so they will make great erosion preventers and will definitely help beautify the area.
The little blue stem is a native blue-green grass that is known for its color change in the fall to a red-brown look. It's a critical host for larva and skipper butterflies. Its deep, dense, sixty-to-ninety-inch roots provide a to- a tolerant and erosion, and erosion-preventing grass. It, it will also need little maintenance, so you won't have to worry about it much.
We want to line the fence with the little blue stem because they have the largest root length. While we want jopai weed and the black-eyed susan to go over the rest of the area because they are pretty and would absorb, absorb rainwater. If the other plants do not absorb the, all of the rain, the little blue stem would absorb what, absorb what remains.
Costs, these things aren't free. And, and Walmart, a jopai weed and little blue stem seeds will cost you about three dollars forty-eight cents for two thousand of them. Black-eyed susan sells for two dollars ninety-eight cents for two thousand seeds.
Who we've asked? We've asked Cub Scout Pack Three Three Nine One to help take care of the planting of us.
It's not a for sure yet, though.
Thanks for listening to our idea.
Thanks, guys, those were really great. Anybody have questions for these guys? No questions, I've been taking notes. Answering any of these questions, yeah.
And we do have a, a community partner who has a grant to do some of that work that the kids described. Um, and that was a happy coincidence that they had that grant that coincided with the, um, the project that they proposed, so. Yeah, that's the, um, the LEVIAC group has that grant, and they got the renew for this next year. We have one more group, and they've got a lot of multimedia to share with you here, too, so we'll invite our, our last presenters up.
I see your friend Margaret reviewing there in the back, too. Glad that she's here to see these presentations.
How we can improve the oxygen levels in Buck Creek. How we can make Buck Creek have a better environment. Presented by Aubrey A., Caitlin P., and Olivia S.
Wait, what are we fixing? What is the problem? What is even wrong with Buck Creek anyways? Although there are many positive impacts on Buck Creek, one negative problem stands out in particular. We took some tests, and the results of the oxygen levels are way too low. As we did further, further research, we found out that the PPM, parts per million, level, levels are supposed to be around six to nine, but Buck Creek levels are way below. How can, how can we fix these low oxygen levels? How does this affect anything, and what can we do? But first, let's talk about why does low oxygen levels impact the creek?
The impact on low oxygen levels. Why is it important for dissolved oxygen levels to be between six and nine? Why does it even matter? Let us tell you. Low dissolved oxygen levels will impact the aquatic animal population, like fish and aquatic plants like water lettuce and algae. Aquatic animals and plants rely on dissolved oxygen and need it to survive. Just like us humans, we need oxygen to survive. But how do we even fix this problem? Before we dive into our solution, let's back it up a little bit. How are the low dissolved oxygen levels even caused?
Who caused these low oxygen levels? People. Yes, you heard me, people. Everything in the watershed ends up in the creek. Wait, but what does that have to do with the people causing these low dissolved oxygen levels? People use pesticides and fertilizers which pollute the creek. We also litter, which littering causes fish and other aquatic life to die and suffocate. Now that we have everything covered about what's went in the lives, let us tell you our action plan.
Our action plan, now for the moment you listeners and readers have all been waiting for. Introducing the action plan. In our bibliography, we have included where we got our research from, so that we don't worry about plagiarism. If you want to learn about floating fountains, click on the video above, and we'll talk about it together. The information that we highlighted about floating fountains is when the water flows into the creek, lake, or ocean, it allows gas to escape, meanwhile, gives dissolved oxygen to the water body. Multi-faced benefits in the floating fan, it can give the creek a more beautiful look. The website quotes that we listed in our bibliography. When it comes to oxygenation, balance are most beneficial in shallower water bodies. Buck Creek is shallow, shallow, so this will help a lot.
I might recognize a couple of these, uh...
Oh, wait, you need to turn up the volume. Uh.
How do we turn the volume on?
Yeah, it's not, well...
Check it here.
Yeah.
It's turned up there.
And it's turned up there.
And it's turned up here, so...
Do we have to turn it up on the TV?
I don't know. The good news is we have these presentations that we've shared with, uh, Mr. Graham, too, so if you want to go and check out the media later, if it doesn't work here, it's worse now. Can we try again? Okay, everything's up.
That's weird.
It is weird, I just have to break in here too.
The video overall talks about, like, how, about the action plan and how floating fountains can cause, um, the benefits in the creek, and that's overall what we have.
Expensive. First, you need to find out how, we need to find out how big you want your flowing fountain. We found one that on sale for seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents, so you should get it fast before it sells out. Flowing fountains are large and tense, large, wait, that are large are tens of thousands of dollars, but this model, model is small. We need a small one because Buck Creek has very narrow, has a very narrow passageway, so it would be very good for the creek. We don't know exactly how much we need, but all we know is that we have to buy a lot of them. We can do a fundraiser at Granville Public Schools to get all of these flowing fountains installed, and for most of all, save Buck Creek. How to install it? The first thing we need is permits. We are putting something in creek, so we need a permit to be able to put in it, something in creek. Not to mention, we also could do a fundraiser for all Granville Public Schools so we can get more flowing fountains in the creek. Then attach the rope to a rope, attach the rope to a stake fence or at opposite shoreline in the creek, or you can put blocks or way, other weight objects on top of the rope. If you are wondering about any metal or plastic in and creek, this might ease your nerves. Before installing this piece, we can put rust resistance coat in on, so it will not pollute the creek. We also made sure that the flowing fountains we found are not solar-powered because that can take a lot of time maintaining it and isn't overall safe if we don't care for it. We obviously need to do more research about how we're going to install these flowing fountains, but for now, we just need your approval. We don't need the exact, this exact one, but this is the one we found most beneficial in low maintenance.
What we expect from our solution? We are help, we are expecting many positive impacts on Buck Creek. We cannot help everything, like littering, pesticides, but we also are hoping this is a good start to helping Buck Creek. We also hope to help the environment surrounding the creek, such as plant life and other things that drink, that drink or get resources from that water. Overall, we are hoping you, you can help us make the creek a better place. Thank you for listening to our slides. Now, pick up your trash, stop using pesticides. Now pick up your trash, stop using pesticides and fertilizers. Help us invest in this project, and most of all, help Buck Creek become a better place.
Let's see if this one will work, just in case. Probably won't, but yeah. Might as well try. Yes, that's.
We can just voice it down.
You have the uh, the words on there, too, if you want to set up.
Oh, yeah.
This is Buck Creek. Floating fountains can help the creek in many different ways.
This is the first step to help us beautify the water body. We hope that you can you can help us make this a reality.
Who doesn't want dissolved oxygen added in the creek to help the aquatic life thrive?
Do you love Buck Creek as much as we do?
Buck Creek leads to Lake Michigan.
The main source of our drinking water.
Do you really want dirty drinking water?
No! Overall, help us make Buck Creek a better place!
Thanks for watching!
Thanks for sharing that with us. Anybody have questions from this group? So that's a very creative idea.
I don't have questions, just comments. Um, I didn't realize there were going to be four, so I didn't want to only give the first group my kudos. But all of you did a wonderful job. All of the pods selected really strong groups, and kudos to your teacher for the effort he put in. It's very clear that you guys were well-prepared, and you've studied this topic, and it's something very real around us. I loved the QR code idea on the sign for the ducks. Um, the native plant group, your graphic design of your presentation was really good, and so was your humor. And the O-two level group, I loved your multimedia, even though ours didn't collaborate here, um, and just the energy you brought in the presentation up here at the front. So all of you did an excellent job. Thank you.
I want to echo Councilman Nordhug's comments. Let you say that the future is now, and that is very, very cool that you kids are are grabbing this, and you have all these great ideas, and um, let me know where I can send a contribution, because I'd like to back your project. Um, and Councilman Truce said to me when you were here, he said, wait till you hear the pledge of allegiance, because the last time we had middle school kids here, it was very emphatic, and and it it happened again tonight, so thank you, kids, for being here. This was awesome.
Thank you, parents, too, for making the sign.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'm very impressed by by the presentations, by the topics you chose, and by by the research. Uh, it's evident that a lot of a lot of work was put into it, um, and by the presentations themselves, um, it's all very well done. This council, by the way, is has been concerned about Buck Creek, just so you know, um, and has identified Buck Creek as a priority um, for the city to to focus on improvement. And one of the issues that um, some of the issues that we have talked about, uh, one issue that you didn't talk about, that we have talked about, is the temperature of Buck Creek, by the way, which it's just barely cold enough right now, but it is something to watch. Uh, the warming of Buck Creek um, is is definitely an issue. It's right now, it's a rare cold-water urban fishery. So it's definitely something we want to protect, and I just want to commend all of you um, for your for your efforts, and uh, and uh, you know, I look forward to seeing some of these ideas implemented by future city council. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with all of those comments as well. Thank you for coming and presenting to us. Thank you for all of your research and efforts. Uh, I know it's not always easy to get up in front of a big group of people and do a presentation, but you guys did an excellent job. It's clear that you put a lot of time and effort and thought into your projects, and they're really awesome, yeah. So thank you for coming and sharing those with us, and thank you for connecting with our community partners as well. I know you mentioned Friends of Buck Creek and WMEAC, and I think there was another one or two in there as well. So those are some great community groups, if you want to continue what you're working on to connect with, and uh, they also have different events and things that you can get involved with as well. I know my my kids and I like to participate in the Buck Creek cleanup in the summer, so there's opportunities to help with those kinds of things as well. But uh, thanks, Mr. Anderson, for bringing students and for sharing projects with us.
Mr. Anderson, do you want to try to do a picture with everyone, with the council that'll come up here?
Right.
Great, thanks for watching us.
You know, the other thing I just wanted to mention, I said we do have several members that are absent, but we're going to make sure that they see all these presentations, right?
We will, and just while they're while they're um, starting to get out, just so you all know, um, the students had an opportunity to come to City Hall last Wednesday in preparation for this, and we were actually able to uh, have them observe Mayor Bass and Councilman Del Deloof Skip. And then they got to go over to the fire station and see the cool fire trucks.
So we are under public comment now. Um, we have a time on the agenda every meeting for anyone that's in the audience that wants to go up and address the council, so. It's public comment, so come on up if you'd like to say something, give us your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind today. Mike, welcome.
Hi, thanks, Josh. I'm Mike Cobb, Three Three Six Two Forty. First, I'd like to congratulate the new candidates, but especially thankful for Justin and Paul for all your time and service. It's been a pleasure to pray for you all these years, so I appreciate your sacrifice with your families. Second, the election, I think we take it for granted. We have a top-notch clerk here that was trained by a top-notch clerk, Mary, and they do a wonderful job. You know, election after election, just, so thank you, Marcy. We appreciate it. And thanks to Griffin Mer- Mer- Mercy for the time they give me all the time, just they're gracious with their time. And Charlie for the roads on uh, Forty-Fourth Street, that River Town is just wonderful now. And then also the uh, leaf drop-off, what a huge blessing that is to the community. I know it's a little expensive to grind it, but uh, the neighbors all appreciate it. And last but not least was uh, it's nice to see the Dunkin' Donuts, the Pizza Hut taken down and something there, so. And uh, yeah, thanks. Thanks again.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your comments. We're still under public comment. Anybody else want to come up and address the council? You're welcome. Only once. One point. All right, last call. All right, we'll move on then. Um, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And we just got a couple of things here tonight on the consent agenda. We've got a report from the Police Department, our monthly report for October, and we've got the minutes from the Library Board from October twenty-three from their meeting. So Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Motion's their support. Motion support. Any discussion about the consent agenda? Any questions for city staff? All right, hearing done, um, all favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. All right, me opposed the same. Motion carries, agenda, consent agenda is approved. Now we are moving down to the city manager's report, and we'll turn to Griffin.
Thank you. Um, one request and a couple announcements to share this evening, uh, but the request we have um, is from the Police Department. Uh, they are seeking to temporarily hire one additional police officer above the authorized strength of twenty-eight. Um, this request uh, is coming from a place of trying to be proactive in addressing several uh, anticipated retirements uh, coming up in the next year, and with the understanding that uh, when we hire someone who needs to go through police academy, it takes us about, is it seven months to get someone, eight months?
Eight months.
Yeah, it's closer to nine months.
Okay, about nine months to get somebody spun up through academy, through field training, and on uh, the road on their own. And if we are fortunate enough to be able to hire a lateral, it still takes about four to five months to get through uh, our field training program. So with the understanding that we're going to have a number of upcoming uh, retirements, what we're looking to do um, is to try to to proactively take a step forward, hire one additional officer to try to minimize any impacts we may have. And how we're looking to do that um, is by hiring that twenty-ninth officer. Uh, due to the position of the department's budget, we do expect we could do this uh, without exceeding the approved budget, with the understanding that we would need to have some further discussion um, in the upcoming budget process that'll be kicking off here before you know it. Um, but I know both Chief and the Deputy Chief are here this evening and put a nice memo together for all of you if there are any questions about that. But um, we we did start a hiring process a couple months ago, and the reason we're bringing this to you at this meeting um, is actually we have two uh, highly qualified candidates that are currently on the docket and have not been snooped or uh, have not been scooped up by other organizations yet. And uh, again, the hiring is something we do um, as staff, but because this would put us over our authorized strength of twenty-eight, we needed to bring it to council for authorization. So happy to discuss more or address any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Griffin. Uh, Chief, anything you want to add?
I think uh, Manager Graham summarized it pretty well, but a lot of people don't realize how long the spin-up is. Police academy is minimum like four months. Uh, then after they graduate from that, our field training program is close to five months. And just if we don't proactively look at it, we are going to be spending a lot more in the next budget out of um, overtime to cover uh, shift minimums and that type of stuff uh, with the three anticipated departures in the next um, budget year.
Thank you. Thank you for your memo on details. Any questions for the Chief or Griffin?
And I will clarify that we we are not asking to to permanently go over this number. We're trying to do use this as a proactive strategy to just try to make sure we have enough police on the street over the next year when we start to have some retirements. Um, as that process plays out, uh, our goal would be to work back to that authorized strength number of twenty-eight.
So the request from the city manager and the police chief is to increase our staffing by one temporarily. Is there a motion to that effect?
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions or comments? I think it sounds like a great idea, and it's good that we have some qualified candidates that we can work with, so it works out well for the department and for the cities.
Well, I'll just share if I can. I just, I really appreciate how proactive the Police Department's been in this. As as you all have heard for longer than I've been here, um, hiring in law enforcement's very challenging. The council took some major steps um, a couple years ago to make sure that our our compensation is very competitive, but I also don't want to think just because compensation's where it needs to be that we still don't face challenges when it comes to hiring law enforcement officers. And uh, Chief Engle just trying to be proactive and thinking ahead and giving us enough time to try to get ahead of this is is it it's going to put our organization in a much better place than it than it could.
Absolutely. Thanks for being proactive. All right, we have motion support. Any other discussion, comments, questions? All right, Ms. Mercy, if you'll roll in, please.
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Nordhug?
Yes.
And Chair America?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, go ahead.
Sorry. The only other um, item I have for this evening for the council is just wanted to to share a friendly reminder with the number of absences that we uh, had this evening. Uh, we've rescheduled pictures, as as you all saw not doing them before, but we've rescheduled those uh, to take place from four-thirty to six-thirty uh, prior to the meeting on December the eighth. Um, so for those of you who will continue on the council at that point in time, um, please uh, make a note of that, because we'd love to get um, everyone's headshots updated for the website. And that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, well, that raises down to Councilmember comments. So I don't want to do this. We've got a couple of outgoing members tonight, and we've got a couple of us that may have some comments to share with both of you, so. If you have preference, you guys want to speak first? You want us to share comments first, or what do you prefer?
Let's go first.
Go first. Want to go first, Tim?
Sure. Yeah, I want to uh, recognize Justin and Paul and uh, say a deep heartfelt thank you to both of you for your uh, two terms of service, two-plus terms of service, and for your commitment to the city. Um, I, as of right now, am a six-year rookie on this council. I won't be in another hour. Uh, but um, I have learned a tremendous amount from each one of you. Justin from across the table and Paul next to me, uh, nudging me, kicking me. But I tell you, I couldn't have asked for two better mentors than you guys, and I want to thank you for your service to the community. And this is where the the heart of serving people is, you know, in the local community. And you guys have represented that very, very well, and I will miss you. I look forward to working with your replacements, but it's it's been a great six years. Uh, thank you for your love to the city and your commitment in government. And then I also should say kudos to Marcy for yet again navigating us through another election. It's super. Couldn't ask for a better person to lead us there either, so that's it. Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks, Tim. Um, so I guess I'll go next, then I'll leave you guys for the final word, if that's okay?
Sure.
So I was thinking a little bit today, too, or the last couple days about, we've all been together for six years. All of us that are sitting around this table now. Uh, that's quite a long time to have a group together of gentlemen working together on a council. So I was just thinking, I I agree with what Tim said as well, and I appreciated the opportunity to serve with both of you. I've got to keep looking back. But usually I sit over there. But I appreciated the opportunity to serve with both of you. You're both fine gentlemen, um, both very passionate, uh, both very awesome servant leaders. Uh, some similarities, I mean, you both serve with with honor and distinction, you've both been very involved, and both felt very free to share your mind and share your thoughts on different topics, which I appreciate. A variety of different perspectives on things. Uh, I think that we've had a good group here that's kind of worked well together over the last six years. Paul, I think I got to know you probably first in about twenty thirteen when I joined the Park Board as the council representative. After we had a little bit of a shakeup around who was kind of on which committees, I joined the Park Board. You had been there for a number of years already, and you served what, twenty-some years on the Park Board altogether?
Like fifteen years on the Park Board, starting in two thousand, yeah, twenty-five years ago, yeah.
So that's how I first got to know you, was on the Park Board. You were the secretary, and then you were also the chairman of the Fourth of July Committee after that, and during the years there. So I just want to say thank you for all of your service on the Park Board. Thank you for all of your service professionally, and you served for Senator Devlin for many, many years, you know, serving the people in the state of Michigan and really the whole nation, and so thank you for that. Couple things that I really appreciated about you, Paul, um, is you have always felt that you can share your your thoughts and your ideas, and um, we don't necessarily all agree all the time on everything, and probably all of us agree like eighty, ninety percent of the time, but there's a few times here and there where you might have a different idea, and I it's really appreciated that and valued that and respected that. And um, I appreciate that you've been willing to kind of share those thoughts with us, and uh, even if we don't agree, I, you know, I have a lot of respect for you um, in those in those situations, and I hope that you felt like your opinion has been heard and has been valued, even if there's different opinions here sometimes. Um, but I I just really appreciate all of your service to the community, both in the in all the various roles. You know, you spent a lot of time with the Fourth of July over the years. You know, you spend a lot of time with the Fourth of July over the years. In particular, I appreciate you coming back and helping with the Fourth of July after taking a little sabbatical for a couple of years. I know you came back a couple of years ago to help out when when our committee was struggling a little bit. And we had some transition with leadership and, you know, some new people involved with the Fourth of July. And you had the experience that we needed and that time to help out and and step up and really appreciate you doing that, so. Um I hope I can consider you a friend, Paul, and I wish you well in your retirement from the council and and hopefully see you around. But just appreciate all of your service and all of your time here. I know you'll continue on the rapid board, I believe. And that's a really important spot to have someone on, to Grandville as well. So thank you for that. And thank you for your service with seniors and the other committees as well. So I'll miss you. Uh come back and see us and stop in and but thank you. And then Justin, I've been sitting next to you. Tim got to sit next to Paul. I got to sit next to Justin for all these years. So uh really appreciated uh sitting next to you and hearing your thoughts on different issues as well. You're also very passionate about things and very principled in the things that you bring to the council. You always do your homework. You come with a very thoughtful answer or thoughtful um comment or opinion about different issues. You've obviously put a lot of thought into things when you do that. And uh we haven't always agreed on everything a hundred percent of the time either, but you always come and you you bring the receipts and you kind of explain where you're coming from. And I've really appreciated that, um your thought process and kind of how you come to the the ideas that you do. I will miss that. Um you bring, you know, that really thoughtful uh answer to things. Um appreciate all of your service and all of your your time as well. We haven't been on the same committees together necessarily, but I think I probably first got to know you a little bit when you were running for council and then, you know, joined the council and served. And I hope that I can consider you a friend as well. And I'll miss having you here too because I think you've always got some really wonderful ideas about things and are always very articulate in how you kind of explain yourself. And so I appreciate that. But I wish you well. Um I'll miss you as well on the council and uh just wanna thank you for all of your service. I hope to see you around here too. But thank you. So I guess I don't know who wants to go first, but we'll give you guys an opportunity to share your thoughts.
That's amazing.
Doesn't matter, me either.
Okay.
Paul, I don't make the first.
All right.
Okay.
Um well, you didn't leave me with much time. My gosh, we've got another meeting. I can, because yeah, I don't have time for all my prepared remarks.
Oh, you get to.
Oh, I I don't have a lot prepared remarks and I'm not one for long public goodbyes. Uh but I I I will just uh, well, first of all, thank you, uh both of you for your very gracious and generous comments. Uh I I uh appreciate everything that you said and every everything that you said about me can be reflected back on you because uh you've, you know, you've both been, you know, terrific colleagues it deserved with. And and I'm not gonna go on and on about you guys because it's my day. So but thank you for that. Um it's been it's been um referenced by Josh. My service to Grandville did begin uh in the year two thousand when I was appointed to serve as the secretary for the Park and Rec Board. Um um and I was recommended by my neighbor down the street, Bill Dudas, legendary Grandville track coach and World War Two veteran. Um terrific guy. You guys have got to meet up here and thank you, Bill. Um and he he was on that Park and Rec Board too, as most of you also know. But anyway, he's the one who uh who recommended me to start out there. And of course, there's where I worked very closely with Grandville's longtime chairman and mayor, chairman of the Park and Rec Board and then later mayor, uh Jim Buck, of course, I'm referring to. Uh Jim Buck, who began his service to Grandville, I think, of the Park and Rec Board, if I'm not mistaken, like in the early seventies. Maybe it was even earlier, I don't know. But he stayed on that Park and Rec Board the whole time as chairman, the whole time that he was on council and later mayor. Anyway, as you know, Josh, and you uh served with him quite a while here on council yourself. Um anyway, he was a terrific guy, great public servant. Worked very closely with him on the Fourth of July um in improving Grand Grandville's parks. But the Park and Rec Board was very much focused on Fourth of July celebration, which, as we know, is a really outside celebration here in Grandville. Uh so for five years, I was the the chairman of this Fourth of July parade. And then for eleven years after that, I chaired the uh the entire celebration, which includes the parade. Um so that wasn't a long time. Um I was pleased to do it. I was happy to pass on the baton though. So um yeah, it's a terrific celebration. I was just glad to help keep it going. Uh two thousand seventeen, then I was appointed to fill a vacancy here on city council. City council appointed me to this seat and then I prevailed in the election in two thousand seventeen and then was reelected uh along with Justin in two thousand twenty-one. And so I've been serving with Justin this whole time, um except for just a few months before that when I when I came on as an appointee. So that's how I all got, that's how I got to be here. And um so even though I I've only been here eight years on city council, it doesn't, I say only, I mean, it's to a guy who used to work for a guy who had six-year terms, you know, a United States senator. And I worked for a United States senator for twenty-seven years. And I was with him for four campaigns, so you figure it out. I mean, the six-year term was very nice. So the eight years does not seem like very long to me, but the twenty-five does though. So I, you know, I do look, my service to Grandville, I look back going all the way back to, you know, before nine eleven, back to two thousand, um my early days in the Park and Rec Board and and the people there that are no longer with us, who I'm not gonna talk about because that will induce a tear. And I I I have the feeling that you're trying to induce a tear for me, Josh. So anyway, I'll wrap it up. Um it has been an honor and privilege to serve the people of Grandville. I've been fortunate to serve with council members uh and city staff uh who hold each other in high esteem and believe in making local government work for the people. So I thank all my current and former colleagues um on the council for your for your service and uh I wish you well for the future. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Justin.
All right, well, I did write, and I asked ChatGPT how long it was gonna take. And so buckle up. But I wanna make sure that I say everything that I wanna say this one, I'll tell you so. Um it's really been an honor to serve the community over the past eight years. When I first ran for council in two thousand seventeen, I was motivated by my desire to help restore stability in politics and make a difference at the level of government that's closest to home. Um as a teacher, I had long told my students about the importance of civic engagement and I felt it was time to show them and my own children uh what that looks like in action. So to Sarah and Brianna and Ada in the back, thank you for sharing the sacrifice of public service. For the nights that I missed dinners or events or came home after bedtime, please know that every hour away was spent trying to make our community a better place for all of us. When I first campaigned, I promised fiscal responsibility, transparency, outreach, and environmental stewardship. I found my little flyer after Mayor Moss gave me that sign to put away with some of my keepsakes. And I hope I lived up to those commitments and contributed something meaningful. But I believe that this role has given me lot more, much more than I have brought to it. Lessons about how government works, friendships formed through community events and services on boards, and cherished memories of serving alongside so many dedicated public servants and residents. I'm especially proud of what we've accomplished. Building the library commons through a joint tax dollar and donation campaign, passing a nondiscrimination ordinance that protected all residents, adopting an ethical code for public service, investing heavily in our parks, establishing an environmental sustainability committee, and addressing our infrastructure while always maintaining responsible budgets, even when my tax reduction efforts are libertarian-ass skepticism of government failed to prevail. These achievements reflect a council that put community above politics, proof that collaboration and civility can still define good government. But none of this happens without others. As I've said before, council members are only temporary stewards. The real strength of our city lies in its staff, our department heads, and the many volunteers who give their time and talent. Though faces on the council change, the fabric that makes Grandville great will remain. To our city staff, thank you all. You are dedicated, innovative, and deeply committed to using taxpayer resources wisely. Marcy, I think you are the heartbeat of City Hall, a model of integrity, hard work, and excellence. And should you ever look beyond our city, perhaps even to the role of Kent County Clerk, know that you would have my full support. Teresa, thank you for the long hours and heartfelt devotion you and your family have poured into our community. Jane and Charlie, your professionalism and creativity have served both the council and the residents well. Though you arrived here as seasoned professionals, you've been far more than mere caretakers in your roles. To our chiefs, to May, Anglin, and Chief Wild, thank you for leading our first responders with honor and compassion. Chief Anglin in particular, your kindness to my family during our most difficult times in two thousand twenty-two will never be forgotten. Your check-ins, coordination of gifts for Ada in at the hospital, and steady encouragement has meant the world to us. You are not only a phenomenal police chief, but you are an incredible man. Our community is beyond fortunate to have you as our chief law enforcement officer. Matt, your deep knowledge of zoning and steady professionalism have been invaluable. And I am so glad that you are part of this team. Dave Randy Cracker was a special man with a heart for our city. His loss was tremendous for this council and for the community of Grandville. Thank you for stepping into his large shoes and always offering solid advice and clear explanations of the law. And Griffin, I began my time here under the steady leadership of what my students would call the GOAT. Ken cannot pronounce it. His knowledge and wisdom shaped my early understanding of governance as a council member. With his departure, we went through a rough patch. But your arrival as city manager helped to heal and refocus our city's organization. Your integrity and vision have restored confidence and ushered in a new era of wise, character, and driven leadership. You are absolutely the right person for this job. To my colleagues on the council, thank you for eight years of collaboration marked by respect and civility. We have not always agreed, but we have never been disagreeable. Josh, thank you for your thoughtful questions, your commitment to learning and improving our city. I have enjoyed your thought-provoking questions and perspectives and always enjoyed the learning you brought back from MML. Paul, congratulations on your retirement with Patsy. Your decades of service to Grandville speak for themselves. Your time on this council is merely one portion of a life spent serving the interests of others. And Tim, I'll admit, I was uncertain about having two members of the same family on the council when you were elected, but you immediately proved me wrong. Your positivity, fairness, and continual praise and encouragement of others have been gifts to this body. To the residents of Grandville, thank you for trusting me to representing to represent you. Serving as your voice and as a steward of your tax dollars has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Your support, even during my overly ambitious run for state representative, meant more than you know. I hope that I have served you well. Finally, to Mike and Jason, welcome to the council. You are joining a team and a community that cared deeply about doing good. I wish you both wisdom, patience, and joy in your journey of public service. Thank you, Grandville, for allowing me to serve. I will forever be grateful for this experience and for each of you who has made this community such a remarkable place to call home. Thank you.
I guess that's a good enough way to wrap up the meeting. We'll find gentlemen, comments, so thank you for your comments. Thank you for your service. I'll miss you all.
Thank you.
All right, so we need, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight. Would you like to make the motion?
So.
Support.
Shouldn't support, I think you guys might do that. Any uh any final comments? I'll, we'll do a roll call vote here for the adjournment, Marcy. It says I'm a chief.
Councilmember Steenstra?
Uh yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Chair America?
Yes. You're adjourned.
All right, we're gonna begin the swearing in. Please raise your right hand. Aye. And please state your name.
Aye, Lex Sullivan.
Aye, Jason Flanagan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances?
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the city of Grandville?
Of the city of Grandville.
I will faithfully perform?
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of city council member?
Of city council member.
For the city of Grandville?
For the city of Grandville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay. I'm gonna have you all sign here. Jason, I'll have you sign here.
Sorry, I'm a lefty.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mike, we'll have you sign up there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well, welcome again, everyone, to our second meeting of the evening tonight on February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll uh call the meeting to order tonight. Um we need to review the motion.
I think we should do it. Let's do a roll call and then.
So we're gonna go ahead and call the roll. That's the city clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Gelderlos? America?
Here.
Steenstra?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vanderwall? And Mayor Moss?
I would uh, Mr., I would move to appoint Josh Maringa, uh council member Josh Maringa to chair this meeting.
Second.
Motion support? Any comments or discussion? All favor? I'll do a roll call vote, I guess.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Yes.
America?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, excuse me. Yep, the chair will entertain a motion to excuse uh Mayor Moss and council member Randy Gelderlos and JR Vanderwall.
So.
Support.
And motion in support, any discussion? All favor of excusing the mayor and councilman Gelderlos and Vanderwall, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Repose the same? All right, motion carries and the members excused. All right, we got a short meeting tonight, uh moving down to public comment. Um time on every agenda of the public comment. And one is in the audience that would like to address the council. Just come on up and give us your name and address and tell us what's on your mind tonight. Mike, come on up.
Josh, sorry, I forgot earlier, but um I brought Steve Moss a balloon on Saturday, a smiley face, and I told him uh every time he looks at that balloon to think about all this whole city praying for him. So seemed to be in good spirits, so thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else wanna make a poll comment tonight? One once, twice? All right, we'll move on then, thank you. Uh next item of business tonight is election of the mayor pro temp. And we wanna handle that this year. It's kind of a tradition after our election and our regular council meeting, our first council meeting of the new term is kind of an organizational meeting. In fact, our charter actually directs us to elect a mayor pro temp after our council meeting, but we have several absent tonight, so I would like to handle that.
Um since it's gonna take four votes to um elect someone, I would move retain all this election of mayor pro temp to our next council meeting.
Is there a second for that? Support? Support. All right, any discussion? We have done that in the past. Um I think that's generally a good idea. Get a full council for a vote like that. So motion support to move our election of the mayor pro temp to our next regular council meeting. Hope everybody will be in attendance. Any of your discussions? Say all in favor of that motion or should we do a roll call? Anything, Marcy?
Roll call, yours.
Yeah, roll call? Okay, so we'll do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Flanagan?
Yes.
And Chair America?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move that to the uh next meeting. So uh very short meeting tonight. This might be a record, but. So we'll move down to council member comments. Um just go around the table, any comments here? And then we'll get the meeting up tonight. So I guess we'll start on this end with with Mike, welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to uh first off, thank the residents of Grandville uh for electing me and giving me the opportunity to represent you on uh the city council. I'm very much looking forward to uh serving and and helping our city in this capacity. Uh wanna send my congratulations to uh council members Truce and Nord Nordhook on their retirement uh from the council[1759.38] and just want to thank them for their service as well. And lastly, just want to send congratulations to Mayor Moss on his reelection. Councilmember Gelderlos on his reelection and council member Flanagan on his election to council. And I'm looking forward to serving with the six of you these next two years. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tim?
Yeah, congratulations to Jason and Mike and to Randy for the election wins. And I look forward to working with both of you. And I will no longer be the rookie, but I still will be the oldest council member on the Grandville City Council.
You've worked for a long time, yeah.
So it'll, it'll be a good ride and I appreciate your love for the city and we'll work together as a team, I'm sure. So thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, I just want to say how grateful I am to have an opportunity to serve the city in a different way, a new way. You know, I want to say that, you know, council members Truce and Nordhook have really set a high bar and left big shoes to fill and I'm excited to work, work my hardest to try to live up, live up to their service. So excited to get to work.
Thank you. If there's any city manager report, you have any?
No, we're fine.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so yeah, I'll have a final word, I guess, then. So welcome, Mike, welcome, Jason. Look forward to serving with both of you. Congratulations on your election. So congratulations to Steve and Randy as well. Look forward to working with you guys over the next few years. So you both have been involved in the city over the last couple of years in different capacities, serving on committees and boards and obviously very passionate about, you know, service and being part of the community. So thank you for that and look forward to the good next couple of years serving. So thanks so much. I don't have any other comments. So is the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn for the night?
Support.
Motion support. All right, any discussion? Take a roll call vote for adjournment for tonight.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Flanagan?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Chair Maringa?
Yes. We are adjourned.